Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting of the Guyman City Council for May the 31st, 2018. That means tomorrow's June Day.
Yep.
All right. So at this time, I'd like to invite Jeremy Crenson, I'm probably going to butcher that, you correct me, from the First Baptist Church, he's going to give our invitation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thankful for your mercy to us in Jesus Christ. You do not treat us as our sins deserve, Father. You give us mercy when we deserve judgment. So we thank you for this assembly tonight. We pray that your grace would be upon us, that you would give wisdom to us, and that we would not think more highly of ourselves than we ought to, but with sober judgment according to the measure of faith that you've given us. Thank you for the positions of authority and leadership that are represented here today. We pray your grace would be upon them, and that, Father, in all things, we would submit to one another out of reverence for Christ. We pray you give unity of mind, and that you would give a desire to serve and to make decisions with excellence, that this community may be strengthened and built up to your glory. And we pray this all in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Alvedres, should you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Crone.
Here.
Alvedres.
Here.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second?
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number four is public comments and announcements. Chief McFadden, timing.
I'd like to give you a little bit of history and update about the storms we had the other night. I know there were some people concerned about the way things went, so kind of walk you through our timeline just real quick. The way our system works is we're the ones that decide when storm shelters are open and when their storm sirens are set off. We are constantly in contact with the National Weather Service when things like that happens. I know a lot of people were saying that different people were telling them to get in shelters, and the number one person responsible for your safety is yourself. So if they're telling you to get in shelters, get in shelters. By all means, don't wait for us to sound the sirens to get in shelter. So we constantly watch the weather when it's going on. So we got there, the first storm had kind of passed through, and it already rained and held. Honestly, my kids were playing in the puddles, and then a tornado warning came across my phone. We went from a tornado, or we weren't even in a tornado watch, so it wasn't even really considered. So we went into action, called Mitch, called my staff back to the fire station, and started opening up shelters. Shelters were open roughly within eight minutes, and we had sounded the sirens. The first storm, it did have some rotation, but Weather Service wasn't worried about it. That's the one that passed through. That's the rotation that people had said that they saw. They definitely saw it. My firefighters saw it. Everybody saw it. But the second one, the one that was in Goodwill, was the one the Weather Service was extremely worried about, and that's the one that they called us and said, hey, you need to sound the sirens, and you need to take shelter. So that's kind of where we're at with that. This is a plan. It's pretty near and dear to my heart. I've researched it. I've massaged this thing for the last 10 years, trying to make sure it works. I've been here 18, and I can't remember the last time sirens were set off. I mean, you all that have been here longer, I have no idea. I don't know that they've been set off in 18 years, other than testing them. But so, the system worked. Did it have some flaws? Yes. Can it be worked a little better? Yes. Fortunately for us, it doesn't happen very often. We're not more in Norman, so the system did work, but I do want to reiterate to everyone that it's your priority to stay safe. We're there to help you. We're there to assist you, but we're there, you've got to take care of yourself first. So it's kind of a basis of what happens. I had, my family had the same information that anybody in the city had. I wasn't holding information, and I was on the phone with Mitch, extremely grateful for, you know, his guidance and what he had to say, and together we made the decision to sound them when we did. So are there any questions for me, concerns? One of the questions that has been brought up is about the library and not being a public shelter. I think in the past, what was discussed with previous administration was the fact that if there was a traveling exhibit, say there's some kind of Egyptian exhibit in there, did you want to pack people in there? And that's something that administration, council, we need to side together. Are we going to open it as a shelter, or are we not going to open it? And that's, I will go either way. We've already got Home Along. We have Sunset Lane Baptist, so it'd be three right there close together. So I'm on the fence. You know, it is a public building. It would be good. My other concern is then the firefighters would really be responsible, since it's a city building, we probably wouldn't have a building representative on site, other than the firefighters. Every other shelter we opened up, there was a representative on site who took it over from us after we opened it, and we left it with them, and they were in charge of getting people back out so we could start assessing damage, keeping people off flooded streets, that kind of thing. So those are, that's what I have to say about it. So any other questions, concerns, comments?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other public comments or announcements?
Go.
If you'd come up to the podium, Robert.
Good evening. Robert Carter. I had discussed it with, earlier, with the city offices about, were to discuss the situation on Ash Street, and she suggested that the public comments at the city council might be the appropriate place. So what I had was comments about Ash Street, a property I own across the street from Hatfields used to be at its hard facing. It's probably the only street in Guyman that's still unpaved, and today it's a lake. I could sell tickets to a boat, I guess, if I had a boat. But I've talked to the city manager in the past about doing something with that street. It's kind of a public nuisance. Nothing's been done, and I just want to address the city council and see if there's any intentions of doing something with the public service of a street that's used by a lot of people. Back behind the motel, the Ford dealership, Auto Zone, there's utilization of city services go down that alley a lot, and I just want to bring it up, and if there's any questions about comments, I would entertain anything. But I have discussed this with the city manager in the past, but nothing's been done, and I wanted to see what's kind of on the agenda for taking action on that street.
I'd make a suggestion that you contact our current city manager, have a discussion with him, and then we'll go forward.
Right. I haven't discussed it with him, that's for sure. It was the last one.
Thank you.
But there might be another one, too, but that's just off the go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments and announcements? I'm going to make one. Everybody remembered this week is the Jim Hitch Golf Tournament for the youngsters. They started today with practice rounds and some other things. Tomorrow, they really start playing. I think there's 120 entries, I believe, somewhere in that neighborhood. So it'll be at Sunset Hills. It's great to see all those little guys out there playing. Yesterday, they had the pitch, chip, and drive contest, and I went out and watched a little bit of it and brought back good memories from when the grandsons were, and my kids were about seven and eight years old, and there were some eight-year-olds out there that can outdrive you, Mr. Swager. I do believe. Any other public comments and announcements? All right, we'll go on. Agenda item number five is a proclamation declaring the week of May 20th through 26th, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week. So we've got a little proclamation I'll read, and then I'll present it to you. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical service is known to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now, therefore, I, Mayor Kim Peterson, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through 26th, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Stronger Together, and I encourage the community to observe this week with other appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities dated this 31st day of May, 2018, the City of Guyman. I've got, you'll come up, Chief. Your post. Can I do so the cameras? Chief Wadley, presenting the call. Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all. All right. Don't hurt yourself. Don't hurt. Agenda item number six is a review of the proposed fence permitting process. The amended fence permit ordinance draft is included, and the fence permit fee schedule is included. Mr. Mitchell?
Really, there's no action on this. I really just wanted to see the council's direction on which way y'all would want to go. Is this something we should pursue before we go forward? Is it, any changes? Do y'all like it? Do you not like it? Just where y'all are at with this? Do you see the need for it? Is there the permitting that you don't want? Which way y'all would like to go?
I personally like it. I like it that there's some kind of structure. There is no fee, other than the fee if we need, if there is a need for a reinspection, and then there's a fine. I'm guessing that's the fine, the 10 times the reinspection fee if you get caught building one? So, I mean, there is some kind of structure there. I like it. That's my vote.
I'm just the opposite. I wonder why we are so obsessed with having a fence permit, or permit, or a fence ordinance?
I believe it's to avoid what happened in the Elks.
I don't believe that a fence ordinance would have changed anything out in the Elks, because the fences, the structures, et cetera, out in the Elks were still built within easements. So they should have known that they couldn't build in an easement at that time. Didn't have anything to do with fences and what have you. I believe we can do everything that's in this ordinance right now, without the ordinance. And I'd like to give a little history here. This is about the third time this thing's come up since I've been on the council. And on February the 8th was the last time that it came up, February 8th of this year. Mr. Clap Saddle stood up here, and he said, and I quote, according to the minutes, "The city currently does not issue permits for fences." The next sentence was council member Crone asked if there was currently a fee for building a fence. Mr. Clap Saddle said, "No, and we do not inspect fences." And we got a handout today from a performance metrics report for April, and it shows here that there were 26 residential permits issued, and two of those were fence permits. How do you issue a permit for a fence that we don't have a permit for? They're calling fences structures now so that they can get around not, or without the fence ordinance. And I think that, I think it's all a matter of money. I think they're trying to, or we're trying to just come up with a way to charge a fee for this. I think it's ridiculous.
Well.
And I don't believe that the state of Oklahoma building code has anything to do with fences.
Well, just to add to my experience, I personally put in a fence, and you talk about a fee structure. I was, there was a charge, which, that's not written anywhere yet. We don't have anything in place. I gladly paid the charge. I got a permit and put up a fence. There was an inspection done, just to make sure that I wasn't building on any existing lines, or anything out of the ordinary, or in my, or just overstepping my boundaries in the easement. So the reason I think this is a good idea is to have some structure, and there is no charge.
We get things in the mail all the time that says, "Before you dig, call," and it gives a number that we're supposed to call, so digging includes fence posts, fence post holes. As far as making sure you're not putting it in the easement, there's no reason a building inspector can't come out and tell you, or show you where your easement is.
And I think that's the purpose for this, to tell you where your easement is. And your statement earlier about there's no buildings or fence build-outs in the easements in the Elks?
No, I said there are, but a fence permitting ordinance would not have changed that, I don't believe.
I believe so.
Well, they're built, they're in the, or even back then, in the ordinance, it said you couldn't build in an easement.
Right, but nobody was checking. Nobody was checking their boundaries, and they just, they would just check with their neighbor and build up back-to-back. And that's why a lot of people are going to incur charges, and we were taking the rap for that.
My point in it is that, after having a discussion with you and other things, and doing some thought and thinking back on some things, we had a gentleman over on Sixth Street several years ago that built a, put up a beautiful cedar fence, and he put it right on the curb, along Sixth Street. And it was put up, we didn't have much of an inspection program back then, to be honest with you. And it, since it was that close to the street, and it blocked the public's view of the corner and all this stuff, he had to take that fence down and move it over 25 feet or whatever at his expense. Now, if we'd had the permitting, if we'd, if he'd had to require, come get a permit, show where it was, no charge, our people are going to come out and confirm that you can build a fence on this property, on these stakes, you meet all the requirements, is the materials going in the fence, blah, blah, blah. It would save him a tremendous amount of time and effort. And then we've got other folks that want to put them on front lawns and build them up six foot tall. And I don't think that the fence, a fence ordinance has to be totally restrictive. I think what it actually is there for, in my opinion, is one to protect people, they're going to go to the lumberyard and punch a post, and I'm going to throw a fence up, we've got buddies coming, and they get it in the wrong place and have to move it. Or it protects the neighborhood, because all of our, all of the codes, all the building codes and ordinances that we have in this city are not geared to be against the people building the project. They're there one to protect those people, to make sure the work's done satisfactorily, that it's been inspected, to make sure it is done satisfactorily. We've got, and it's also there to protect our licensed contractors. Not everything has to be done by a licensed contractor, and things on your house don't have to. But when it comes to the, to a lot of these things, the fence ordinances and the other things, part of it is also to protect the people that live in a certain radius around you, to make sure that that fence is built so it doesn't, is not detrimental to the neighborhood, or their home values, or things like that. And I don't, I think if it's, if it's written and done properly, since we don't, haven't been charging a fee, is that correct, Mitchell?
We have a $24.
$24 fee.
Which is the minimum.
The minimum fee to come and inspect. It's a pretty good insurance policy for you, or let's say you build a fence like that, and it's off your property lines, and you decide to sell your home, and the regulator or the mortgage company, the new mortgage company comes out and says, "Well, your stuff shows a fence on here, but it's on the neighbor's property." So I think it's, it could be, to my way of looking at it, it's a protection for you and your neighbors both.
I'd just like to answer Mr. Crone's question on the fence permits. And I wasn't at the meeting, Mr. Petty was, with Mr. Clap Saddle was asking about it, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you pointed out that in our ordinances that we have the ability to permit construction permits, and a structure, which is what's listed in there, anything that has a place on the ground that's solid, the fence meets that. It doesn't say fence, it does say construction permit, and so that falls under that amount. $24 is the minimum amount we can charge for any permit. $4 goes to the state of Oklahoma, $20 goes back to the city. So that's why those were done in there. If I'm wrong, please.
No, I think the structure definition in the zoning ordinance is where that comes from.
So that was under the advice of?
So if I decide to build a rather large mailbox structure, I'm going to need a permit?
Mailboxes are regulated by the federal government. Post office.
The structure.
We don't supersede the federal government on that, on that thing. So it's in them. But there are, there are things about the right of way, but mailboxes, we do not regulate for that reason. It's out of our jurisdiction.
Well, it just bothers me that your group will stand up here and say, "We do not have issued fence permits. We do not charge." But by your own admission right here, we did issue two permits in April, and evidently we charged $24 for a structure.
At that time, I think he was correct. His meetings were with Mr. Petty after that point, when we started putting together the drafts.
So we don't need a fence permit? We're just got a structure permit?
We have no guidelines. So I can give a permit, but have nothing to put on it. If we don't have some guidelines or some standards, we have nothing to inspect. There's no, it doesn't say you have to put it on your property, it has to be built to where it doesn't degrade your neighbor's property values, just like Mr. Peterson said. So a minimum standards on that gives you something to inspect against, it's just.
Well, I would, this is a discussion only. I would respectfully request that people listening to this on TV, please call council and let us know your opinion. Let us know.
It's a great.
I'm against it. It's Alvedres's for it. So you got our opinions. One of the things that was brought up at the meeting on the Alks meeting?
Before we go any further, please don't make a public statement that you're voting for or against.
Okay.
There's no action to be taken. Is that, is that right, Mr. Petty?
Yeah, it's just a discussion.
I know, but we can't even make a comment. I'm going to vote for it tonight. Never mind.
Well, I think, I guess you could say that, but there's no vote to be taken.
Okay. All right. Go ahead. Your opinion can be put up there.
One of the things that was brought up at the Elks meeting, when we had that Elks meeting, was everybody was supposed to get a plat when they bought their property, and on that plat, it showed everybody where their easement was at, and that you're not supposed to build in an easement. And the thing that, you know, it, nobody's, you know, apparently, nobody paid any attention in the Elks about that, even though we kept hearing that, well, you should have got a plot with your property plot when you built, when you bought your property up in the Elks. And so to me, it didn't, you know, people are going to do what they want to do. And I don't know if really more rules and regulations is the answer. I really don't.
Unfortunately, in my opinion, we live in a world of rules and regulations, and I think that if you ask people from Elks, and if you look around town, we have a huge variation of structures, huge variation of fences. And I think when you look at our city and us talking about a plan to make it more beautiful and all this different stuff, without structure and without certain things, I don't know that we can get there. I think we do get a bunch of different stuff thrown together. Now, I understand that this could be frustrating for other people and all that, but I think this just is part of the construction deal, and this is just one little piece of, this kind of lines out this part of it, and then we're done. I'm okay with it because there is no fee. If you backdoor it, then you have to pay the price, and that's just kind of how life is. If you don't do things by the code, someone's got to pay for that. And I think that kind of holds people accountable, which is okay. I'm okay with people being held accountable, because ultimately, what's gone on in the Elks, people are having a hard time selling houses, people are having, not wanting to move over there, there's a lot of speculation on what's going on. It's creating problems for homeowners. This can, in the long run, make it better for homeowners in the future that won't have to suffer and front $30,000, $40,000 for these people to fix those problems. So that's just my opinion. I'm just one person. That's just kind of where I'm at with it.
Mr. Harris, would you mind defining reinspection fee for me?
Reinspection fee is for when something fails. If you do a plumbing inspection, it fails, and they have to come back to reinspect it. On this one, I don't know why it was put in there, other than that standard to put reinspection fees in there. We don't have a charge. We don't have, there's not a lot of standards, even in that ordinance right there, and I've got one that's got a little bit more in it, just to kind of protect about concertina wire in the neighborhoods and that kind of stuff. But if they don't fail, they don't, they don't get reinspected. And literally, I think Larry, was he at your house twice?
Uh, once, that I know of.
Did he come before you built it, and then once after?
Um, no.
Typically, what he would do is if you want to build a fence in your backyard, he would set up a time, meet you on site, talk about it up front, to make sure everybody knows what's on. Then do the permit, and then come back and inspect it when you're complete, and there would be no charge for that. So there's really an additional trip. He will come out on any, any property, just to look at.
He probably did a walk-around. I mean, I'm never there, so.
Just to, just talk about it front, but that's what we do. Reinspection's only if it failed. And so that's, that's what that would be. And we would never intend to do it. I mean, but that's one of those things that if the attorney wants us to put it in there, we put it. If you don't want it in there, don't think you need it, you draw a line to it.
Well, I just wanted to point out to the public that, yeah, it says, "Application fee no charge, fence inspection fee no charge, reinspection fee $30, construction without a permit, $300, 10 times the application fee." I'll read that right off this.
Yeah, I think that needs to say 10 times the reinspection fee. I think that's, that's a miss. That's where I would adjust that, because take note, we don't have a charge. I get what you're saying.
No, and that's, and that's a draft review to look at, and of course, anything that comes before y'all for voting on, the city attorney goes over and reviews.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't laid a pencil on that yet, so.
Thank you.
The council can state what they want in it, and if they want a fee of any kind, fine. If not, well, that's, you know, that's fine, too. So I think the purpose of this is just to get kind of the direction of the council of what it would like to have.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Anything else?
I've seen the paper where there's a lot of these houses, and then on property of the city. If we have a permit on business, are we going to have the same problem with the city that didn't fix it, if they're not maintained and taken care of? That would be a question I have, because I see a lot of businesses around the Sure and Bad, and prepared, and go with care of. and Bad and Compared that go with care of, but I'm.
I, I believe that in the, that in our codes, that, that if fences are not maintained, that they can be called a live date structure and done. Yeah. Thank you. All right.
Mine was about to be on that.
Probably I'd be now. All right. Anything else on agenda item number six? All right. Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on approval of District One Multi-Jurisdictional Task Force Agreement between the District Attorney, the City of Guyman, and Guyman Police Department. Chief Bab.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, we currently have a agreement with the District Attorney in regards to a multi-jurisdictional task force. Uh, they have changed some of the wording and outlined how it's supposed to work, which, um, I'll let, this is Agent Kevin McIntyre, he's the agent in charge of the task force. Uh, he can kinda maybe outline what the changes are. It's just to make, uh, some more clear language on, on how it's supposed to work and when it can work.
Good evening. Um, I'm Kevin McIntyre, I'm the agent in charge of the District Attorney's Task Force for this District of Oklahoma. Um, as Chief Bab said, we currently have an agreement with, with the Guyman Police Department. Um, this language is new upon me taking, uh, the role as leader of the task force. The language changes basically clarify, um, uh, when Guyman police officers could exercise authority outside the City of Guyman. It kinda gives me a little bit more control, a little bit more reign on when that action takes place. Um, it, it's not a result of anything other than me just not being comfortable with knowing when other agencies are acting under my authority. Um, currently, we don't utilize the agreement, um, quite often, um, particularly with, with the Guyman guys because of staffing shortages and responsibilities within their own jurisdiction. Um, we're very choosy about asking them to, uh, to operate outside the City of Guyman, um, because we understand that that's their, that's their priority. Um, and, and I, I don't really see that changing. Um, uh, there, there are some, uh, some new programs at the police department, uh, the sheriff's department and police department joining together for their, for their special response team. Um, and quite honestly, that is a great asset for me in my office, so that, that, that would fall under this agreement to where if I, if I needed assistance outside the City of Guyman or outside Texas County, um, for something that was, uh, of a high-risk nature, that I could call upon the chief and, and ask him to, uh, let his guys operate under this agreement, um, for a limited purpose. Um, it's a great tool for me. Um, it's tools that don't cost me anything, and that's why it has to come before you, because it's a tool that you pay for, that, that I may ask to use from time to time. Um, but basically, the changes are kinda firming up, um, communication with me before they act upon, uh, this agreement. Um, there were some smaller agencies that were, that were allowed to do things a little, a little more freely than I was comfortable with, and so we kinda tightened it up a little bit. It kinda gives me a little bit more, um, restriction on when someone can operate under the authority of my office. So, uh, and I'm, I'm free to answer any questions if, if you've had an opportunity to look over the agreement. Um, uh, I know Mr. Petty has seen it, uh, and, uh, uh, Mr. Boring is the one that basically wrote the agreement, so, um, I work for him, but I, I trust his, I trust his opinion of legal matters over most anybody else, so.
Any questions?
Mr. Petty, have you?
I've reviewed it, it simply allows the agencies to coordinate activities and to assist one another, and I don't see a problem with it.
Great Facebook page, by the way, I follow you, that's a good one.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Ms., uh, Chief Bab, what's your thoughts on this, 'cause there's no staff recommendation?
Um, I'm, I'm good with it, we, we've been a member of, of the multi-jurisdictional task force for several years, uh, we, we have a current agreement, uh, we work well with them. Uh, this is just some language change that helps them, and a matter of fact, will help the agency head of whatever agency it is as well, because if someone with your agency's out working, um, in their capacity, they're going to have to know it before they're allowed to, so it's a, it's a safeguard for the agency as well.
Mr. Wagner, you got anything to add to that?
Uh, Chief Bab gave it to me two weeks ago to review as well, and I'm okay with it, I don't have a problem with it. Like he said, uh, it's pretty much the same, it just, uh, tightens things up a little bit more for the DA as, as well as the city.
And, and the chief is the ultimate gatekeeper on that activity. Um, the call, the call from me goes to him, um, and he, he makes the call as to whether that, the personnel are available, um, and, and I, I have a full understanding of the fact that they're not always available. So he remains the gatekeeper of all that activity, um, because that's the way I choose for it to be, um, because I would want, I would want to be the gatekeeper for my, my people as well. Um, so, I mean, he, he still maintains control of his staff, um, ultimately.
Good to go, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion on the approval of District One Multi-Jurisdictional Task Force Agreement between District Attorney, the City of Guyman, and Guyman Police Department, item seven. Second.
And a motion and a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action on the purchase, purchase of three replacement buses for the ride. I believe there's a staff report attached and a copy.
There's a staff report in our desk, it, it got left out of the packet. Uh, what was in the packet was some backup for that, but I don't know if I've had a chance to review that. Um, the grant was applied for last year and awarded, um, for a max of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-dollar, uh, purchase price for three buses. Uh, the grant is for eighty-five percent reimbursement, so the, the state will reimburse for the price of buses for up to a total purchase of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand. Uh, with the bids that we have, I think it's a hundred and ninety, ninety-eight, the one bid that you had in here was for one bus, sixty-eight thousand's for one bus, uh, uh, two, two oh five. So for three buses, it's two oh five, that's under the amount, and so with the reimbursement part from the state, the city's cost for the three buses is, is thirty thousand eight-hundred-nine dollars, uh, to purchase those buses. Uh, we looked over the bus specs that we currently had, looked at any problems that we had had with those buses. Uh, the ones we have currently, all of them are rear-load, uh, for the handicap-accessible door lift, and it's really hard for people in wheelchairs and the driver to get people in and out of there because of the way the seats currently sit. This one shows a, a layout a little bit better, shows two, uh, wheelchairs shown in there at that point. If there's not a wheelchair rider at that position, there's a fold-down seat, so anybody can ride in those seats if, if that is not being used at the time, uh, early in the morning going to seatboard and stuff like that. Uh, we also upgraded the lift. The current lift that we have is an eight-hundred-pound capacity with some of the electric chairs that are out with people these days, with the, the big batteries, long life. Um, it, it pushes those lifts pretty hard. Uh, we spend, I think last year, we probably spent twelve thousand dollars working on lifts, just repairing them. Uh, we have to take them to Liberal, to a, a dealer up there to deal with it, nobody here in town can even work on them or will work on them. Uh, so we increased to a thousand-pound capacity on this one as well. Uh, also have, um, camera systems. Most everything's going to camera systems now for protection of the riders and for the drivers and for the people out in front. Uh, so the camera would take pictures of what happens in front, if somebody steps out, uh, takes pictures of the driver itself and also people coming in and out of the bus. So if something goes on, there are, there are video, uh, protection for that, so. Uh, these also have backup cameras, uh, which all of our others don't, so that helps with the blind spots on those buses. Are, are there any questions on?
What's, uh, old buses' capacity?
Uh, it's the same.
It looks like the twelve, there's twelve for the new ones, I was just curious, the comparison.
Anything below fifteen does not require the CDLs, um, and I think these are actually considered, uh, thirteen-passenger buses, but I think that counts the driver.
Okay.
The old ones are seventeen capacity.
Capacity's seventeen.
The three that we will replace have seventeen.
Up road and those, and they are rough.
They're rough and they're loud. The, the cages and stuff on there are very loud. Uh, these are, um, between a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand and a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand is the mileage, and if that was my pickup, that has a lot of highway miles, something like that, that's not that bad. But if you think of a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand in Guyman streets, start-stop, start-stop, we make short trips, back and forth, it's very hard on them, it's very much like a, a trash truck or something like that, it's very hard on the brakes, it's hard on a lot of stuff, and they're just hard to maintain. Uh, they're about ten or, or twelve years old in the age for those.
How does that affect the, the morning pickup as far as number-wise? I understand we, they're used quite heavily in the morning to pick up kids to take to school and that.
Uh, I don't think it's gonna cause a problem, partially because they're gonna run. We have a bunch of buses now, a lot of times, we have, we've got two of them down right now, been down for months because of the repairs.
But also the big, big deal, and I know the school has bought it one bus, and they're looking at some others where they're getting down to that fourteen capacity, so you're gonna have to have the CDL to, to drive them.
You still have to have a chauffeur's endorsement, we have to have that for carrying passengers, um, but it'd make it more reliable.
Any other discussion, question?
I'd like to get the city manager's take on this.
It's part of the grant that, uh, I guess was, went out for last year, um, when Larry was in the seat, and the deadline is the twenty-third, uh, to submit the three buses, so, um, the three that we're getting rid of are aged and extremely old, and, you know, eighty-five percent grant, that's, we're not gonna get it any cheaper anywhere else, so, we need to do it.
Over the years, other councils before us, and, and we have also discussed, uh, using smaller vans or that sort of thing instead of, uh, buses because of the economics, and, um, quite frankly, when we, we went out for that grant, um, in my study, and I just flat missed the fact that we were gonna have to have these bigger buses, and, and, uh, I wish at some point in time, we would consider the economics of it and pay more attention to our contracts and see what the, we're locked into when we request these grants. Um, I'm sure we probably need these buses and, and, but I'm not sure it's the best way to go.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the purchase of three replacement buses for the ride, item eight.
A second. Have a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve the Guyman Tree Board Five-Year Improvement Plan as recommended by the Tree Board. Staff reports attached and also plan. Do we have somebody to present it?
The Tree Board met and they came up with a five-year plan on things they would like to see, um, possibly within Dillingar Parks. Uh, these are all, and they all were understanding contingent upon funds and availability, but , uh, they would like to adopt this as looking, uh, out five years down the line, and it has it, um, attached yearly on what it is they expect to do, kind of a set of goals.
Okay.
I actually would like to compliment the Tree Board on the time they took to study this and, and to make the proposal, the five-year plan, and to give us the flexibility that if we don't have the money, they understand that we're not gonna be able to do it, so I, I just really appreciate that they took the time and effort to give this to us.
Any other questions, discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Guyman Tree Board Five-Year Park Improvement Plan.
You got a motion and a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number ten is discussion and possible action to award the bid for fifty new and unused four-wheel gas golf carts. Bid stipulations are attached. Questions, Mr. Mitchell, or Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Wagner, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I apologize. Get a little shock collar put on you.
The, uh, we got the packets we opened, um, and the two different bidders came in, the Easy Go and the other one was Yamaha. The difference really isn't much in price, it's the specs on what it was, um, lower horsepower, um, lower CCs, smaller front, uh, suspension. Instead of, uh, Yamaha had shocks, this one was a single suspension. It was, uh, they didn't meet the bid specs, and, uh, my recommendation is to go with the Easy Go.
The, uh, the eighty thousand.
Neither one of the Yamaha.
No, I'm sorry, Textron, yes, my, my recommendation is Textron.
Yeah, but neither one of the Yamaha bids met the specifications.
Not the minimum, and it did not exceed.
Okay.
Well, that throws a kink in that.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Questions? Have a motion?
Uh, we just went from the eight, the eighty thousand to a hundred-and-fourteen, roughly sixteen hundred a cart to twenty-two hundred a cart. What's it, what's, what's gonna be for the future? I know these were two thousand fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
Cards, um, that we have a lot of them.
Thirteens, I believe they were thirteens.
Two thousand thirteen, I thought they were fourteens. Either way, um, will there be some kind of maintenance plan? I know in the past, we've talked about maybe, uh, we're buying these out, right?
Right.
Okay. What are we gonna do as far as maintenance, um, so we don't end up here, you know, three, four years down the road?
Well, you have a four-year warranty on all those carts.
So our maintenance would be oil changes and that's about it? Reasoning?
Yeah. Um, I guess it depends on what your recommended maintenance, I mean, what, what extent does that go to?
Um, yeah, you're, I mean, these are gonna, these are gonna be gas, right?
Mm-hmm.
Gas cars, so you're, however many times you maintenance a car, you know, I do mine roughly every three months. Are we gonna get on some kind of plan to keep these up to spec or date as much as possible on a maintenance schedule, or, you, you know what I mean? I mean, we, we gotta check filters, anything you do to a car, you're gonna, anything to a gas engine.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna, I mean, you have to check it out every once in a while, so you gotta put it on some kind of maintenance schedule, so I wanna know what we're gonna do about that.
Do they have hour meters on them?
These have hour meters, the Yamahas do not.
Okay, so, so you set up a plan that every semi-hours you change air filters, you change oil, just like a car. They should come with recommendations.
Right.
And staff ought to be able to do that out there.
And I can make, I can write up a policy.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it needs to be a policy, it's just, it should be common sense that we get, we need, we need to perform maintenance.
I think we got the expert coming up here.
Luke's here.
How's everybody doing?
Good, you? Good.
Stay your name for us, then we'll go.
My name's Luke Benedict, I'm the, uh, Territory Fleet Manager for Easy Go, Textron Specialized Vehicles. To answer your question on the preventive maintenance of the golf cart, it's recommended that you change the oil, the filters, and the, uh, you know, just do that preventive maintenance twice a year. So usually, you do it in the wintertime, not very busy out.
Like I do my mower once in a summer, one.
Right, yeah, same thing. As a matter of fact, the engine that's in the golf cart is a thirteen-and-a-half horsepower Kawasaki engine, which is widely used across the board with a lot of other small-engine motor vehicles, so very easy to, to maintain, very easy to take care of. Uh, on top of taking care of the, you know, putting together a preventive maintenance schedule, we can do that for you. We can, we can write up a preventive maintenance schedule for you, and actually, our factory-direct and come in with the staff and train them, which we are more than willing to, and willing to do when you get the new cars.
Would that be included?
For us to do it? Uh, you can add that to it if you would like.
Are, are you asking the question, is that included, them setting it up or them doing the actual maintenance?
Um, just setting it up.
Just set, yes, setting it up's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have any, anybody in this area or close, what's the closest dealer you have in this area?
That is a discussion that we have.
Authorized dealer, author, somebody that can perform the maintenance with them?
I heard recently that there was a dealer set up here in, in Guyman.
Okay.
Uh, brand new, I believe. But the difference between what you're dealing with, with the golf cars at the golf course, is you are getting the golf cars from a factory direct source. And the way our company is set up, we are set up in value streams. So we have the golf value stream, we have a consumer value stream. Consumer value stream includes the dealers. They strictly deal with the public, anybody that wants something for their recreational use. Golf or for a lake house or anything like that. With me, I'm factory direct. So we actually employ factory direct service techs that take care of you. This staff is very familiar with our service tech JD that comes out and takes care of you.
Out of where? Out of Wasa?
No, he's out of Yukon.
Yukon?
Yep. And he comes up here, he's usually here within twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours to take care of whatever you need. Now, with that being said, there's no, there's no charge to you. We provide that to you. So he'll take care of any kind of warranty work, any kind of help with preventive maintenance, things like that. Your dealer, if he is set up to do service, more than welcome to call him. But there's going to be a fee with that when we already provide it to you. That's the difference. He is set up to strictly take care of consumers that come in and take, buy their vehicles from his shop at retail. We are the factory direct that sell it to you at a distributor price and provide a factory direct service tech. He's trained right out of Augusta, Georgia, comes in, takes care of the fleet for you and any kind of warranty. And he has all the tools and all the parts and everything right there on his truck. So your vehicle will never leave the property.
As far as warranty, do you have kind of a summed up what that all includes?
Uh, the four-year warranty is going to take care of the power train, all the, the electrical equipment that's attached to it. Yeah. I mean, you've got little things like accessories that are put on the golf cart, coolers, things like that. You know, they're going to be two years instead of four years.
My question is, do we have a policy in place that if somebody is abusing a golf cart, driving recklessly, going over whatever?
Me being a PGA golf professional and growing up in the business, I can give you plenty of ideas on that, so.
Because I, that's my biggest concern is the abuse that these carts seem to take. And I would, I'd like to see if we don't have a policy to figure out a way that if they're abusing the golf equipment, they're not allowed to rent one, or they lose their membership. That's what I'd like to see.
We do have marshals out on the weekends already. I mean, I know it's not through the whole week when it's not real busy. But through the weekends, we have a marshal that comes on Saturday and Sunday that regulates and makes sure.
How much training those marshals go through?
Not much.
That's probably something that needs to be looked at.
We're, we're getting well, way off those bits on the golf cart. Anything else? Do we have a motion?
One more thing for my city manager. Can we afford these?
Yes, it's, you're actually ahead by buying, purchasing where we are now. Because your current was a six-year agreement and they're wearing out. So to go forward and have the equity in the carts that we have at this point, we're already ahead. So yes, we can afford them.
I make the motion to award the bid for fifty new golf carts to Textron. That would be item ten.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have one nay and four ayes.
Agenda item number, oh, agenda item number eleven is discussion and possible action to approve, to advertise for bids for financing of fifty new and unused golf carts.
I make the motion to approve to advertise for bids for financing fifty new and unused golf course, carts, item eleven.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crown.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item twelve is possible executive session to conduct city manager's quarterly employment performance review presented to Title twenty-five Oklahoma Statutes three oh seven, Part B, Part One.
I make a motion that we go on executive session for item twelve.
One second. Have a motion in a second.
Crown.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Got five ayes.
We'll stand adjourned.
I'd like to motion, will we reconvene?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to reconvene.
Mr. Crown.
What?
Swager. Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
We'll stand, reconvene. This is the Guyman City Council. There's no action taken. Agenda item thirteen, is there any new business, any new business?
I, I just have something. Recently, with our rains and our flooded Main Street, did we incur any damages? Is there anything we need to look at to do differently to avoid that? I know it's an issue, but.
Can you wait just a second?
Sure.
That's really not, let me, let me go to the reports.
Okay.
Instead of new business.
Okay.
Even though it's not on there, we're going to do it.
Okay.
Then, then we can talk. Okay, so the next one, we're going to add the reports from the city manager and council. It may be on the next. If it is, we're going to go ahead and do it. So now, ask your question, he can talk to you.
Okay, yes, Main Street flooding.
To my knowledge, there was no flooding down Main. However, there was extensive amounts of water during the rain. After, once the all-clear was given because of the tornado, which is kind of an.
Unusual.
Unusual circumstance. Dean and the fire department went out to barricade off Main Street to keep the trucks and cars driving through, making wakes to go into the businesses. Because he called and he said, I'm heading that way. Once the all-clear was given, you know, they might have gotten there a little bit quicker had, you know, the tornado. We didn't want personnel or anybody else to go towards it. But they had to also open the shelters and then close them back up. And then they were bolting over here to stop people from driving and make awakes that would have gone into the businesses or even where we're sitting now, so.
In a situation like that, we do need to close it just as fast as possible. As a former business owner on Main Street, it is a real problem. And it's not the flooding as much as it is the people driving down there.
Right. And I had a business owner that came in and saw me on Tuesday and even said, thank y'all for barricading when you could. We understood the tornado and appreciate it, so.
My report was, I came down afterwards. I went and checked on my place and I came up Main Street. And they told me I needed boots, but I just had tennis shoes on. And it was up to the top of the ledge out here still. What it amounts to is, as I've told some, told some people, have asked me about it, the storm drainage system was put in in the thirties. Guyman's grown, we've made people paved, we've got paved parking lots. We've got, you know, more paved areas and more area to run off. And it's kind of like now, it's, quite a few years later, seventy years later, it's time for a bike pass surgery because those drains are too small to handle the water. And I do have to come in because Pete was out with, Pete and I, and his staff and Martin and everybody was out with the trailer. They'd gone and got the barricades and were setting them up so that they could relieve the ambulances to go to where they needed to be. But it's, it's been, we had that happen four years ago. We had some real quick little rains when the library was first open. It floods Main Street and the hot rodders want to drive down it and make awake for the young kids. It's not the hot rodders, it's the kids. We did it when I was in high school. But I had a Volkswagen. We floated, scenic float here. Okay, any other reports of council?
I want to say thank you to all the good volunteers we had that came out on Memorial Day and the Saturday before to help put out the flags and everything at the cemetery. Uh, I'm still getting calls on how nice it looked and a lot of people comment on the flags, but I'm, I'm getting a lot of comments on how nice the cemetery looks. So Parks Department and especially the cemetery workers really have done a great job. The two times that it's extremely hard to make a cemetery look good is when we're in a real drought or a lot of rain. Because if we're in drought, can't make it look good, get a lot of rain, they can't keep up. So they're doing a good job out there. We do need to possibly consider a budget for them this year that, where they can get a few more flags. They're starting to wear out.
Any other reports, Colin? I guess still one other I'd have is, today it was, however you want to take it, they had the groundbreaking for the Shawnee's project. And two hundred jobs in Guyman, Oklahoma is a pretty big deal, plus the tourism. So we'll go forward with that. Anybody got anything else? Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Wagner?
Wagner.
I'm sorry.
But no.
You just reminded me. I know I'm old and forget, I've had the shingles. I'll explain that. You're good? We'll adjourn as the Guyman City Council. We're going to reconvene, reconvene. We're going to reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Agenda item, we'll reconvene as Guyman Utility Authority. Agenda item number three is discussion and possible acts on approval of change order number one to Cobalt Construction Incorporated for a decrease of fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents on the lift station in Force Main to serve southeast Guyman Project.
Good evening. Just saw y'all a few minutes ago.
Yeah. Decrease is good.
On, on this one, this was a good thing for us to do. The, the cost was extremely expensive because of the depth of the line and crossing Hurleman down at that distance. They had to shut down the road. And if you look at the unit price, it was five hundred and six dollars per foot was what was originally bid and awarded. So we, we took that part out and went back in with the directional bore and bored across the road. So we didn't have to shut down the road. That was very expensive as well, only a hundred and seventeen. It makes a hundred and seventeen look good when you look at five hundred. So it decreased that. It did add a manhole and a few other things. But by negotiating that, it made it easier on the contractor, better on us financially. And this money here is what we, y'all approved, the change order to add the emergency disconnects for the generators on the lift stations. We already done that, just paid for that and then some. So that's what this one is.
Questions, motion?
I make a motion that we approve change order number one to Cobalt Construction for a decrease and for fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on approval of the following invoices for the lift station renovation project. Reimbursement to IPD, IBTS for the invoice paid to TCEC in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-two cents. Invoice number CIV two-five-three-one to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of two thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Pay request number five in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and ten dollars and forty-one cents to Slattery Construction. Do I have a motion for a question?
I'll make a motion that we approve the following invoices for the lift station. Reimbursement IBTS in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-two cents. Invoice number CIV twenty-five-three-one to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of two thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. And pay request number five in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and ten dollars and forty-one cents to Slattery Construction.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number five, discussion and possible action on approval of the following invoices on the eight-inch Force Main and Lift Station Project. Invoice number seven forty-two to TCEC in the amount of thirty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Invoice number CIV two-five-three-three to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. Pay request number three in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents to Slattery Construction. Any discussion, questions, motion?
I'd like to make a motion, approval of the following invoices on the eight-inch Force Main and Lift Station Project, item five.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crown.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action on approval of invoice number CIV two-five-three-two to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of two thousand two hundred, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the water well. Number twenty-three, replacement project. Invoice is attached. Any question, motion?
Make a motion that we approve invoice number CIV twenty-five thirty-two to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible acts on approval of pay request number four to Slattery Construction in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents for lift, lift station and Force Main to serve southeast Guyman Project. Pay request number four. Any question?
Yeah, I'd like a little explanation.
That's why I'm here. On the, on y'all's report, I just sent it a few minutes ago. Oh yeah, we're flogging Mitch in the back. Get all the work done, but there's some pictures of these items, pictures of these items as well. One of them is the new lift station out of Hurleman. And it's got a backup generator built onto it. It's a sixty KW built onto it and all self-contained. That's one of the things that's on it. Our portable generator as well, that was an add-alternate that we took that we can use to, to run all sorts of things with this generator. That came in as well. There's pictures of that as well in there. We've checked out everything before. As part of the startup on this new generator, we're going to have it run. We're going to have to do some things to it and actually test it out and run it and get everything to it. But there is some, some details on that in the reports. Does that answer your question?
I'm just looking through the sheet right now. That's just the amount due from the total. Right.
This is the fourth pay request on this project.
Gotcha.
Probably be two more, one more for construction and then drainage and release of that after the fact.
I make a motion that we approve pay request number four to Slattery Construction in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents, item seven.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is new business, new business.
Well, I just want to thank y'all. This will be my last meeting. And actually, I was looking at today at the calendar. I moved here two years ago today. I pulled in about nine o'clock with a U-Haul. And a whole bunch of junk I wish I hadn't brought enough to haul back, so. Been right at it two years, so you don't have to look at my ugly face anymore, you'll have to look at somebody else's ugly face, for sure.
When are you leaving?
When?
Well, yeah.
You've got the U-Haul.
Still trying to get everything done on, on getting the closing done. I'll be here through Friday next week and maybe a few days and.
I'm gonna make sure, I wanna get down and see you before you do leave.
Alright.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Uh, anybody come up with any more reports I can give?
No.
Okay. We'll stand adjourned as the Guyman Utilities Authority. And we're gonna reconvene. We're gonna reconvene as a special city council geo-bond workshop. So we'll call that to order. Due to the, due to the amount of folks here, do you wanna do it here, do you wanna move back to the conference room? What's your pleasure, Mr. Wagner?
I'm good, right here, if y'all are all, okay, doing this.
Okay.
Um, it'll, I'll keep it brief, there is, uh, I've had two different conversations, uh, with two different people on the municipal financing side. As we look forward, um, addressing the streets in our community, we, we have seventy-seven miles of pavement and, I mean, it's a, there's a huge infrastructure cost with that. And going forward, whether it's a chip seal or an overlay, um, I think we need to look to doing maintenance, hopefully on a yearly basis to try to maintain what we already currently have. And some of the roads that we do have are in fair condition to moderately good. Um, if we look to next year to see about issuing or going about with general obligation bonds, down the road, we will have more, uh, conversations about it. But, um, you know, in Guyman, we have the, uh, couple of options, I guess, to try and find the money to do so, because it is gonna be expensive. The last analysis was a hundred and, hundred, or, uh, eight hundred and eighty, eighty-six thousand dollars to replace a mile of road. I mean, that's, that's a huge cost. But the other ones state that if it's in a fair to decent condition, if you utilize after five years, one-dollar investment, rather than waiting it until it gets to a poor road, you're gonna spend eight dollars. I mean, it's, it's that big of a margin. So, um, we can discuss it and, uh, the two gentlemen that have actually called me about the geo-bonds will, um, come up and discuss it and, uh, let us ask any questions we may want. There's a certain criteria that we can and can't do on it. Um, it's, it's, um, you can't do a longer than a twenty-five-year geo-bond. You can't, uh, at least seventy percent of it has to be specific to what that money goes towards, which in our case, I'm guessing would probably be a hundred percent towards the streets. But it's something that we need to really start talking about and, uh, seeing if this is the way the council wants to go. Between sales tax and utility rates, I don't really see another possible option. I think this would be the best option, um, going forward, to see if we could, uh, possibly, um, fix and maintain the roads going forward. So, it's really, I just wanted to let y'all know, I've had some conversations and to, uh, let you know that I will try and schedule the two gentlemen that have called me, uh, to come up and get to Guyman to, uh, let us, y'all ask any questions you may have. Because we have to give, uh, notice, Mr. Petty said it's seventy-five days, correct? Yeah, seventy-five day notice, uh, before it can go to a vote of the people. So, something that, uh, just wanted to address, we're working on it, we're, we're compiling numbers, trying to figure things out, and we're having those conversations, we need to possibly go forward in the future. So, um, with that, I really don't, I'm not gonna go too in-depth, I would rather wait on my notes and the other stuff that I do have until those gentlemen can be at council to address any of your concerns as well.
And then, and you're planning on two separate meetings?
Yes, it, it will be on two separate meetings, which in that, in the, in the sake of Guyman, I would say is a good thing, because, uh, it's not just one specific person who's gonna come in and talk to us about geo-bonds. You're gonna have two different entities with their own evaluations, their own subject matter experts or whatever you wanna call them. But they will actually both be in here trying to address geo-bonds with the council. So you're, you're getting options, so that's kind of a
Good.
an interesting thing for our town. And that would be very beneficial to have almost a competition to see what's gonna be the best for the citizens of Guyman. So I will schedule those and get those, uh, as soon as possible to get here. Because like I said, there's a, a timeline that takes so much time. Um, it's a process that, looking out, but we can definitely start tackling now. So, with that, that's really all I'll, I'll leave it with, I just wanted to let y'all know that we're working on it, we've started addressing it and we will get there.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Anybody, have any useful comments? Anything else? Now, if anybody doesn't have anything else, we'll call this meeting adjourned, thank everybody for counting.